Sitting at home watching said that they with the podiums there, they can't, they can't hear.
Get to hear it from Ben too, don't worry.
Ben says I do.
Yes.
We just need to speak or move that podium closer or something.
Call this meeting to order, Stewart City Council tentative agenda, Monday, October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, six P M, council chambers. Call to order, Kapatrik.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Kava.
Here.
Agenda approval, consent agenda, approval of minutes of regular meeting of nine eight, two thousand twenty-five, and special meeting of nine eighteen, two thousand twenty-five. Approval of financial statements as of nine thirty, two thousand twenty-five, approval of bills as presented, approval of liquor license, Little Things Children, L L C, Stuart Flower and Gifts, Casey's Marketing, D B A Casey's, Osatras, Mexican Restaurants, Dirk's Scoop, Summit Grove.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. How do you vote? Kapatrik?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Kava?
Yes.
Okay, four city council vacancy. I've talked to Ash and the council person, it's up to the council, but I think it'd be a lot easier if we tabled this till the November meeting, wait to see who gets elected, and then just appoint that person.
I agree.
Concur.
Okay, police department, Chief Rial.
We can move into the end.
Would you rather be at the end, Dave?
Well, while we're passing those out.
She was saying take the whole stack.
I'm confused. I'm gonna slow.
Um, so I thought I was gonna have bad news. Um, due to the government shutdown, I got an email October first saying that we weren't gonna hear back from the grant results until all that was done with. But Friday afternoon, got an email from, um, the cops grant and they did award it to us, so.
That's good.
So, I've kinda prepared this, I had to do it real quick this weekend, I wish I could've had it to you guys, uh, before the packets went out, but like I said, I didn't even know we got the award until, uh, Friday afternoon, so. But, um, essentially, this is my proposal on what we do with that. The, uh, if we go to that second page, that's really, you know, I think what everybody's gonna be focused on is the, the numbers. Um, I tried to break this down by year, um, you know, starting at the beginning of, of the program all the way to the fourth year, because the grant goes for four years. So everything in the first four columns up to the total cost, that's what it's gonna cost us to do this, and then everything from that point on to the right would be the, the, uh, amount of, of different funding sources that we have to go into it. Essentially, the short and sweet, and I'd be more glad to go over this in more detail if you guys want to, I know you have a long meeting, so. Uh, but essentially, what this would do is at the end of the year, um, each year with, with this grant, um, it would give us a surplus of about thirty-eight thousand. It changes each year based on the four percent increase, um, but thirty-eight to thirty-nine thousand, um, each year, and that's after we pay for the officer benefits, uh, all that kind of stuff. So, um, obviously, year five, which is that bottom part, we would lose the cops grant, so this is what it would cost us to continue on from that point without the cops grant money. Uh, it would cost the city that first two, you see the, the city match, um, would be about fifty-four hundred dollars to, uh, to keep that officer on the, on the street. Uh, that's what the cost of the city would be. And then obvi- and then it goes up based on a four percent increase each year, so I, I gave it to you for ten years, just so that in case there's any questions on what happens after the grant, uh, is done, you know, is there gonna be any big costs, things like that. Any questions on the grant? It's a one, it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, we have to match, um, fifty-two thousand. So, those are the two, you know, that's really our requirement as a city. Uh, and then, what I'm asking we do with that surplus, if there is any, um, you know, we've talked with Chip and everything else, we've been talking about this for months, about some of the needs with the department, so what I would be requesting from you guys is if we can hold on to that surplus, whatever it may be, if it's ten grand, great, if it's thirty-nine, like I think, great, but let us use that for equipment, um, if we need it to do any sort of incentives to keep officers here, uh, you know, vehicles, whatever we may need as a department, but allow us to use that surplus instead of going into like a general fund where, you know, we, we might not get to use it. And then, very lastly, um, so we, we did an application process several months ago, went through the whole, the, uh, all the steps, and then obviously last month, I wasn't able to present it to you guys because we hadn't heard back from the cops grant yet, so we decided to hold off this meeting. Uh, we have one candidate that made it through all the steps. Um, his name is Luis Manuel Lopez Perez. He is twenty-two years old, he's engaged to Emma Johnson, Michael Johnson's, um, daughter. Um, their plans actually were to move to Stewart, um, when she graduated from school anyways, so he was kinda waiting for this opportunity. He saw it and said, I gotta apply. Uh, he's wanted to be a cop since he was, you know, a young boy. Grew up in a, in a little bit bigger of a town than ours, Nevada, but not, nothing too crazy. Um, so, got the small town, um, you know, he's used to that, he wants to be here. He's done a bunch of ride time with us after the application process just to see if he wanted, you know, if he liked the feel of this department. We spent time with each of us, all four officers rode with him, got to know him. Um, so, he's the person that, like I said, he was the only one that passed all of our, all of our requirements. He does have, I'm waiting on a, on a post-test to come back, he just took it last week with the academy, it'll usually take a couple weeks to get results. Um, and then, with the government shutdown, we're still waiting on, uh, result back from the F B I. Um, and I don't know when that's gonna be. But contingent upon those two things, um, I would ask that we, uh, you know, give him an offer of full-time employment, pass those, you know, if he passes those two things. There's some things that, there's some steps after the fact, after we give him that offer, drug tests, probationary period, things that he would have to successfully complete after the offer. He's agreed fifty-five thousand would be the starting salary, um, plus benefits. Um, he's agreed that he'd sign a four, uh, four-year contract like everybody does.
Okay.
So, any questions about him or the position or?
You know, when, when does she graduate, kinda when they were, is it like this year when she's done or?
Um, I'm pretty sure it was, it was coming up.
It's not like three years from now, is it?
No, and he did say that, obviously with their, with their family ties here.
Sure.
You know, he does have a place to stay, in the meantime, so he does, you know, sleep night, and he's not good, whatnot.
That's all, it was perfect.
Where are they currently located?
Uh, do they?
Nevada, oh.
So, Dave, you want a motion?
I was gonna make that motion.
Yeah, I, I've got it listed out there on my last page, um, basically just what I'm requesting is, we formally accept the cops grant, we have to do that for me and Ash to sign off, one of the council needs to vote yes to, to approve it. Um, we approve that matching fifty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars over four years, um, and for our matching, set, you know, part of that. And then, we authorize a conditional full-time employment offer for fifty-five thousand with benefits to Luis, and then the number four would be approved that, you know, any of the surplus money from this program be used for department equipment or salary support. So that was my four.
Hopefully, we don't have to have motions for each of those, we can lump it all into one candidate.
As long as you write it down.
Lump that into one, and I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second by Morgan.
How do you vote? Kapatrik?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Kava?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
I just wanted to say real quick, we also got a grant for G T S V, uh, program, so, um, not nearly as much as this, about seven thousand dollars to help pay for some extra traffic and forcey projects, things like that, so. Just wanted to give you guys that.
Good work.
Cool.
Thank you.
Sir, are these, are these speakers?
Those are four of mine.
Oh, okay. Can we move the podium up a little bit? We're still getting, people can't hear at home, so. Thank you, Chief.
Okay, six, Holmes Murphy Insurance Discussion. Good evening.
Good evening. Good to see you again.
Hello.
We have these if you wouldn't mind passing them down, thank you so much.
We just take one?
Yeah. You can have all of them if you want, but.
It just held up right here, so we'll see if it'll get passed from here.
We'll see if they'll, they'll get to see it. Perfect. Well, thank you for having us out here today. Um, we just briefly wanted to come out and introduce ourselves along with Holmes Murphy, and talk, you know, why we're here and why we think we can potentially help. Um, and from there, it could be an open dialogue, if there's questions, if not, no worries, we can always follow up, um, at a later date. So, my name is Claire Michael, I am on our property casualty team over at Holmes Murphy, been with the company for a few years and really excited to come out here and talk with you all today.
And my name is Megan Miller, I'm on our benefits side of the house, so Claire and I kind of work in tandem to take care of all of the insurance you'd be purchasing. Again, excited to be here, but I think we're gonna start with, with the property side.
Yep, yep. So, kind of why are we here today? To fill in the backstory, um, we met with the municipal board last year about insurance, and we were a little late to the game, so it didn't really make sense for us to proceed with getting a new quote. Um, and so then this year, we were asked back to talk with the board, and through our conversations, we were talking about potential purchasing power, and what that could look like for the city as well. And so I don't wanna get too, um, ahead of myself, I wanted to talk about why we're here and then also who Holmes Murphy is, so I wanted to briefly backtrack, and this, um, what do we call it, a placemat shows you high level who Holmes Murphy is, so we're headquartered in Waukees, we have around now, I think it's fourteen hundred employees now. We're privately held, which we bring that up because it's important with insurance is, we don't have any outside stakeholders to report to, meaning we can put the client first and act on their behalf. Um, and then, we are in sixteen other states, I think that's grown since we've updated this, um, and around two hundred shareholders, so they're all employees, um, which we're really proud of. So, from the backside, it dives a little deeper into the property casualty and employee benefits specifically, but as mentioned, and what Megan said, I'll be kicking things off just with the property casualty side of the house, and as I mentioned earlier, with talking with the board and the potential purchasing power, the board last year was looking to go to I C A P. I don't know your current insurance structure, and if you guys are with I C A P as a carrier, but they, um, offer incredible terms and a really competitive rate, so they offer a lot of throwing coverages that are very beneficial for cities, as we work with many cities, we find this to be a huge benefit, and that hence why we're out here today to see if, one, you would be willing to send us all policy information, and we can take that, digest it, do a comprehensive review, and come back out and just educate. One, educate what do you have, what does that look like, and then after that, we can discuss, does it make sense to potentially combine the board and the city for purchasing power? Does it not? Do you want to remarket? Have you remarketed? So, that's the ask here today, and again, open to any questions you might have, but don't wanna overwhelm you with all things insurance. Um, and so that's our thought process and our reason we're here today, is to present that to you. That's what we're doing for the board right now, is we grabbed all policy information, we're gonna do a comprehensive review and educational session, so wanted to ask if you wanna be a part of that. Um, if not, no worries, just wanted to come here and talk a little bit about ourselves. I don't know if you have anything specific to the benefit side you wanna add.
I think we can start with the property side, 'cause that might trickle into a different bucket, so I'll kick it back to you guys and see if there's questions first on what Claire was saying.
When you say purchasing and combining, can you, can you give a better definition?
Yep, so on the carrier standpoint, when you have, um, call it a smaller premium payer, you don't have as much leverage or negotiation power to them of like, hey, can we get this thrown in, or can we get our rates cheaper? When you have a larger premium payer, for lack of better words, you have more power over the carrier to say, we're paying you X, can you come down on X, Y, and Z, or can we get this thrown in, and when you have a larger account, they're more willing to have more coverages thrown in. Or on the smaller accounts, just, this is some insight into the insurance world, when you have a smaller account, they might not be as willing to give you more favorable terms, but when you have a larger account, what we often see with other cities that we work with, they combine the two, and it just helps with overall ease of convenience, and oftentimes, there's coverages that are probably overlapping in the sense of, yeah, it's double coverage, where some might save you premiums, some might not, but it just streamlines the overall insurance buying process.
So if there's nothing else on the property side, the benefits piece of this, you know, seat at the table, if you will. So when we talked with the municipal utilities board, we were able to see what their benefits were, and I'm s- seeking a little bit more understanding on if your city's benefits are combined with the municipal utilities board or not? I don't know if anyone, are they, is it separate?
It's a bit.
Do you use a broker today?
No.
No? So how many p- employees do you have enrolled on the city's plan?
Uh, I think we give you like five, six, or seventeen, or twelve, but we'll give you exact number.
Okay.
It's the same information that I gave you on the utility side.
Okay, so there was sixteen, I believe, enrolled on the utility side, so there'd also be sixteen?
No, sixteen, I think two.
All together, I see, okay, thank you for helping, okay. That, now, okay, now we're cooking with oil. So, if your guys' renewal is on January first, have you received your rates yet?
Uh, not yet.
No, you haven't yet, okay. Just a little bit of market trend insight, and we'll, we'll get out of here, 'cause I know everyone's favorite conversation is insurance, but, um, we're seeing pretty high increases this year, eleven to sixteen percent is standard just with the Iowa P B M bill coming. Um, and so, what we were looking at, I looked at the rates that you provided with the municipal utilities board, and if those are the same for the city, those are super competitive, like you guys are in a great spot in terms of your offering, so if you're looking to make that next hire, um, on your police department, like, they're gonna be offered great benefits, you have no, you know, no second thoughts there. I think that our job, if we came in and worked with your, your team here, is to provide insight and clarity, because purchasing power, again, don't know exactly what that looks like on the property side, with sixteen lives, I think that, you know, you're in the union right now, it might make sense to stay there. I'm not sure yet, um, I would need to see a little bit more policy information, and that's something I can follow up with. I did bring some benchmarking, just so that you can see where the other comparable government entities are at, um, in the Midwest region, actually, yeah. I don't wanna just make strides down here while I'm talking, um, but I think the education is a big piece of what's going on right now with all the moving parts in the legislation, and how, you know, the different dispensing fees are gonna play into your employees' costs, I'm sure there are questions that are coming in, so our goal is really just to be a resource for you guys, and if we end up working together, that would be lovely, but if not, also, you, you have to make the right decision for Stewart and the city here, 'cause you're responsible fiduciary, you know, for all the tax dollars and whatnot coming in. So, um, I think that, is, is there any questions on what, on the benefit side of things?
I was just, yeah, and, and this just answered my question, 'cause I was gonna say, you know, if this, the city grows, and there's more employees come in, but it, it says the employer size, the three to twenty-four, um, so, I, I didn't know if there was any discounts on if it got bigger, or how that all worked out, so.
Absolutely, so something that we came in, if there's sixteen enrolled on your plan, there are a few different levers we can pull if you're like, this insurance is costing us too much, and we're seeing your baseline getting reset every year, right? If you're getting a twelve to sixteen percent increase, your baseline increases no matter how well you perform. Now, you should have a little bit of purchasing power within that union, because you're combined in a pool with more lives, right? So, ideally, statistically, that's gonna help smooth your risk a little bit. Now, if you were to grow, that provides a lot of opportunity for you to take a little more risk on yourself. There's different funding strategies that we can come in and educate on, that we would make a recommendation based off of your claims information and your utilization. There's a whole bunch of different networks, like this is all the fun stuff that we nerd out about, that it's like, not anyone else's job to know, which I, I, I understand, but, um, there's just, there's a lot of different levers we can pull, and like, that's our, you know, as Holmes Murphy, that's our job, is to be your strategic partner, and help you understand what options are out there, and if that makes sense for your guys' community. Does that make sense? So I, I think if we came in and worked, I don't know if you're, if going straight to Walmart, I would recommend you guys stay there, because their coverage is great, and I've been assuming you probably don't have a lot of problems with them, but if we came in, we would potentially look at different funding strategies, and then what, you know, are you in compliance? Are we taking care of communications? How are your enrollments going? All of those different things, you would kind of have a more white glove approach, if you will. What do you need, Claire, on the property side?
So, in order to proceed, if you want to participate in the educational session and overall review, we would not approach the marketplace without your blessing, we would want to make sure we came in and showed our value first before wanting to do that on your behalf. And so if you're willing to participate in that, all we would need is policy information, just like with the board, um, that really helps our team, that we can go through, depict all of it, and then come back and regurgitate everything that we found, just so, again, another educational session of what you currently have, and maybe some areas we could see improvement. Um, so that's all I need on the property casualty side, I don't know, I think you have everything.
On the benefit side, to approach the market, I would need census information, and then I have your plan designs right now, um, and that's something that I can reach out to Ash, your team, for. Again, I don't know if Walmart's direct-to-market quotes are gonna be more competitive, it's worth a look. Now, we're running out of time here, as January first approaches, you want a smooth implementation date, but do you do in-person enrollment right now? No? Okay, that's something where, that could help come streamline the process, we would give a booklet for all of your employees to have, that helps ex- explain all of the options. Open enrollment meetings we can come and do for your employees, so in-person explaining what all of the options are for them to choose between with the different plan designs you offer, just kinda making sure that they understand what they're being offered, take advantage of it, because you guys have super rich benefits.
Makes sense to me. So, I, I think this is actually the earliest we've ever talked to Ash seriously about, it's just kinda surprising.
Ash, are we, are we having any service issues with our current?
Health insurance. We, everybody's happy with it, and things are going smooth, and I think to compete with it, she just said it's hard.
It is, yeah, no.
We've been trying for the last ten, fifteen years to get anybody to compete, and everyone comes here and says it's hard.
Yep.
It is a really good thing we have, because of the union, and we have to get a credit for that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because of the union, that we're getting really, really good rate on the health insurance.
Mm-hmm.
So, if we wanna build, we might, we can try the property, you know, but the health insurance.
Are we having service issues with the property now, with our?
We don't have any issues to.
We don't have any issues, is it?
So.
Are, what carrier are you with for the city? Is it E M C as well?
Yes.
Okay, yep.
Same, same.
Yep, okay.
So that's the status we have right now.
I will say, once you guys, if you grow to the point where you have fifty lives, you would be eligible to join into this other trust with a bunch of other public entities in Iowa, and they do also have very competitive rates, so there are, as you continue to grow, I don't know what your trajectory is, but there would be more conversations that would wanna be had, just to make you aware.
I agree with you, you know, we need to be more than fifty.
On the utility side, what was their biggest concern? Was it like rates and stuff, and, and like maybe duplicate coverage, or maybe a lack of coverage?
Yep, I think, so when we originally got asked out, it was one of my coworkers, Todd Hanson, and he's traveling, so he couldn't be here, but I think it's always a question, and you're probably feeling it in your personal insurance, rates just keep going up, and it seems like there's no end to it, deductibles keep going up as well, so I think everyone's in the same boat of, hey, is there anything else better out there, and, um, I don't know whose original idea it was to bring up I C A P, but that's something that we see a lot of, um, cities go into, and like I said, it's very competitive, they have incredible, like, general liability limits, I, I don't know, know them off the top of my head, but E M C typically offers one million, two million, I C A P offers, I think it's like six, twelve, it's like insane coverages for almost the same premium, so that's where, um, last year, the discussions almost made sense, but timing just was not in our favor of, okay, if we're gonna spend X at E M C, can we spend the same at I C A P and potentially get more coverages, or can we also get less, um, premium for more coverage? So, I think that was the original discussion, again, I wasn't present last year, but from my initial conversations, I believe that's what.
And that makes sense, I mean, even if you're not having real service issues.
Absolutely.
Um, you know, pricing.
Yep.
Better coverage, more coverage for the same amount.
Yep.
Makes sense to at least look at.
Right, absolutely. And I'm more than happy to, I have some information on I C A P and specifics, more than happy to send that to you if you want to share with everyone else, um, but that's just a good follow-up, I think it gives examples of what we say offer.
So do we need a motion to let them do something, or?
If you want to.
If, or do we just say, go do it?
I bear, I have a motion to show on record.
Uh, did, we just, do we wanna have them look at both, bec- if, if it doesn't, doesn't cost us anything for?
No, no.
Should we just have them look at both, and then we can say, we looked at both?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make that motion.
Second.
Move to second, how do you vote? Kapatrik?
No.
Russell?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Kava?
Yes.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Seven, Womboldt Three Edition, Forrest?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Forrest Aldrich, Shabine Strain Kim. And on the, the first item on the agenda is the street lighting project acceptance, that's the contract with Ardent Lighting, and all the work is out there, there was one street light that took forever to get fixed at Second and Barley, but that has been, uh, fixed and repaired, and so would recommend acceptance of the street lighting project with Ardent Lighting.
Any motion?
Second.
Second, how do you vote? Kapatrik?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Kava?
Yes.
Okay, B?
So B, C, and D is a discussion about liquidated damages, and, uh, based off of that, uh, final pay estimate and Womboldt addition. All the work is done. Uh, Jim's here, all the work is done. Took me a while to get the thumbs up, but all the work is done. Um, representatives from Mackinich are here this evening, and they have requested that, uh, items B, C, and D be tabled to the November meeting, so they have an opportunity to discuss the liquidated damages amount with the, the city prior to having it come before the council. I don't have any issues with rec- with getting it tabled until the November meeting.
Okay, we need a motion to table it.
Second, how do you vote? Kapatrik?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yep.
Kava?
Yes.
Table till November.
I have your number. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm gonna move my papers. Eight, Street Improvement Project, set the date for a public hearing, be November tenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Need a motion?
So, the bid date would be, let's say, to the back.
So we're just holding like on A, we're setting a date for a public hearing?
Yes.
Next meeting, we need a motion for that?
Yes.
By Kava?
Second.
Second, so how do you vote? Kapatrik?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Kava?
Yes.
Okay, then the next one is set the date to receive bids.
Yes, and that would be on the fifth day of November at two o'clock. And I wanted to explain, I, I handed this out, I just wanted to explain what the project was, um, for everybody, uh, so this would be the street project. Base bid would be improvements on South Division, uh, by the park, south of the railroad tracks, it'd be fixing the curb and gutter, if you drive down Division, you can see the gutters are pretty bad shape, so it's fixing that, uh, and fixing Harlan Street between Second and Fourth, there's some areas that are bad on, that kind of sunk in, uh, between Second and Fourth on North Harlan, and then we're taking alternate bids on, making some repairs on North Sixth, that half-block east of Division, and then, at the very end of Southeast Seventh, so that'd be east of McDonald's, at the end of the pavement there, it's pretty much fallen apart right there. So those, we take alternate bids for the North Sixth and the South Seventh, see how it comes in with our budget. And then we're also do redoing the, the entrance drives into the, uh, you know, baseball fields, a soccer park, uh, redoing those drives. We're doing that as a separate division, 'cause it's a separate funding for, um, for those two.
Good.
So that's kinda what the project is about, um, and we'll take bids, like I said, November fifth, and we'll have these for you, uh, to consider at your November meeting. We have the completion date of this to be in, uh, end of June of twenty-six. It'd be great if they got it done this fall, Jim, but I didn't wanna pressure any asphalt contractors trying to get that work done yet this year, because plants shut down around Thanksgiving.
Thanks, sir. Need a motion to set a date, to receive bids?
Move, by Kava?
Second.
Second by Russell, how do you vote? Second, Russell. How do you vote? Patrick?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cabo?
Yes.
Thanks, Forrest.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, nine, resolution number twenty-five twenty-six C, approval of cigarette permit. The Stewart Smoke Shop and Stewart Spot LLC, vapors, liquor and vape.
Need a motion?
Move by Cabo?
Second.
Second. How do you vote? Patrick?
No.
Russell?
No.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cabo?
Yes.
Motion not yet.
Okay, resolution number twenty-five twenty-seven C. Setting a date, let's see, that'll be the tenth too.
Yes.
November tenth?
November tenth.
Two thousand twenty-five, Dolce Holding LLC.
Need a motion?
Some move.
Second, okay. How do you vote? Patrick?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cabo?
Yes.
Okay. Eleven, two thousand twenty-five, Urban Renewal Report.
That the that the big report that I submit to the state every year, describing the tough situation from the beginning of the year to the end of the fiscal year. Very long one. If you have any question, I'll be glad to answer. Answer by the way, I need a motion.
I think we need a couple days for you to explain it. We have to be honest.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll move.
Okay.
I'm gonna break. Cabo, a second.
Second, why Morgan? How do you vote? Patrick?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cabo?
Yep.
Okay. Twelve, retirement proposal, Jim Henderson. I'm gonna talk about this, Jim. And I did have Ash bring up when Doug Christensen retired on his insurance, what he got paid.
That's a little bit different. That's not what I'm, not what I'm requesting, but uh, you should've all gotten a copy of it.
Yeah, no. Yes.
Um, first off, anybody got any questions? Just to, just due to continued short staff situations, that's the reason the uh, accumulated vacation hours are there. Um, when you're the only one that carries certification for the wastewater plant as well as uh, everything else, it uh, makes things a little more difficult. Um, and then on the insurance costs, um, my request was for a cost share for the first year. Similar to what's been done with uh, previous retiring employees. Um, and it would be under the retirement rate. So the share would be about uh, three seventy, I believe. Is that correct, Ash? Around three seventy? City, three seventy, my cost um, for that first year. And then after that, the cost would be a hundred percent on my, on me. Until such time as uh, I can s- sign up for Medicare.
I think Jim will be very valuable, even when he retires, with the information he has on his head to help the other three employees in the future.
Um, is this? You guys mentioned Doug Christensen. Is this, I mean, is this standard procedure that you do this to?
Utility has a etymology policy.
But but we don't, as far as the city doesn't.
No, city does not say that.
Oh, so, okay.
Yeah, that's why Jim would say it's different. It's not similar. It's not apples to apples.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just so many times, we try to tie things in and share things, you know, equally between utility utilities and city. Yeah, I mean, you kinda wait until they decide on wages and that type of stuff too, on increases. So that's uh, where I'm at.
And how many years between utilities and city have you worked?
Thirty. I'll have thirty in January.
Thank you for your service, David.
I'm gonna go ahead and start. I I'll make a motion to accept.
I I I think if we start something, we're going down a rabbit hole on this, but.
I've got questions, I mean, more up here. I mean, in Jim's case, you know, you mentioned you're the only one that holds these certifications, so getting vacation is extremely difficult. So in essence, has it kinda been we're denying these vacation hours to you during your year because no one is able to cover the required coverage?
What do you, run that by me again?
So you are, you have these, part of your your compensation package, you have these hours available to you. They are yours, you're supposed to be using them. Has it been more of a, you've felt you haven't been able to take these hours because then there'd be no one here to provide the coverage required by law? Or is it more of, we have been denying you cover, or deny you the ability?
No, yep, haven't been denied, but in the same, in the same instance, um, when you have the case that I've had, is I've had some inexperienced staff and it's hard to leave them here by themselves when it's just been two of us off and on for quite some time.
Sure, nope, understandable. I mean, in cases like that, I mean, do we have a company we can reach out to help provide that ad hoc coverage? Kinda what we're looking at anyways for filling in the gap of coverage after you retire.
Correct.
You know, those are things that we should be thinking about to help provide the city, help provide the PD, any department. Everyone should be required to be able to take their hours as they require, as they need.
Oh, for sure.
It's their compensation package.
Have you talked to uh, uh, Ipers about continuing employment without having a gap in there?
Um, no, you have to have a four uh, four pay cycle gap.
I was gonna say, yeah, there's a a gap in there before.
Yes, it would be four, four, basically four Ipers checks before you can go back to an Ipers-related field.
So this is something that, you know, we could look at doing in this case and then having a policy, is basically what you were saying. Uh, because as I've heard, we don't have any policy.
We should have a policy on being able to take your hours, potentially even how many hours you can carry over. I mean, most companies have.
We need something.
And that incentivizes make it so employees should be taking their hours, so.
No, I agree.
Yeah.
I'd second James's motion.
Okay.
I mean, I think we need to probably take these apart, in my opinion.
I'd I'd agree with that too, yeah.
Could you just kind of clarify?
So the awarding the the back vacation hours as one motion and discussing the health insurance costs as another motion, that's kinda where I'm at.
And do we have a policy, um, oh gosh, there's already a motion on the floor.
Yeah. I guess, yeah, there is, so we can't.
Is your motion for both, James and?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second then?
Move by Morgan, second.
Second, okay. So how do you vote? Patrick?
Just cause we kinda hustled, no.
Russell?
No.
Morgan?
Yep.
Cabo?
Yep.
I guess for me, you know, and I I understand what you're saying, what would be the reasoning to do them separately, besides just talking about them?
We can now, cause it died, if we wanna start another one. Go ahead.
Well, I mean, we can still make separate motions, correct? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, still like, I'll make a motion right now. I mean, unless there's no objections over the vacation hours, I think we should make a motion to pay the back vacation hours.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll leave this first. Move in second. So how do you vote? Patrick?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yep.
Cabo?
Yes.
Now discussion on the fifty-fifty policy here?
No, I could, and and it's nothing personal to Jim, and I understand his years of service. It's nothing personal, by no means, but I just think that's a rabbit hole. We're gonna have to be very cautious. Cause we do it, we start it now, you can't stop it. And that, that's just my two cents.
I guess, I guess the only thing you can do is if they reach the thirty-year Ipers retirement mark.
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
No, and that is not arguable, by no means. But we don't have that in a code. We we need to write that first instead of it needs to be in black and white, white, I guess, first. But that is a good idea, like moving forward.
Cause you currently have a city, a combined employee that that is part of the city's insurance plan as a retiree. That would be Alan. Alan purchases his secondary insurance through the city, through the city's insurance.
Is that true?
I don't understand what you mean.
Alan gets his secondary insurance through the lineco.
Through the insurance.
Yes.
That that's uh, return is there.
That is, that's what I said.
Any employee is situated utility entitled if they pass fifty-five years old to get the return.
Which that's what you're gonna do.
So.
So.
Current, year two forward.
Is fifty-fifty insurance part of it or?
No, no, that's completely different.
No, I don't. That would be the second year on.
Yeah, that's a principle. It's year two is one of the pair.
If if you're a full-time employee, when you retire, if you passed fifty-five, you go on the same health insurance, but completely different policy. That's what Jim is entitled to do there, is to go on that policy. There is a chart. He passed fifty-five, so so he would be paying seven hundred eighty a dollar, give and take, instead of paying the two thousand that the regular in two years. That's what Alan is on now, uh, he retired ten years ago and he's on that same.
What what's his proposals this month?
Correct.
So he's entitled for that retirement plan. He's just asking for the first year to be have and have between city and himself. Uh, which is gonna be have the give and take seven eighty-eight or something like that, three hundred nine twelve, that's thirty-six, four thousand give and take.
Do we, um, what does a city pay for Alan's part of things? Nothing? He he's just?
Not, he is, he is, he is on his own.
He's just on his own, but he's just.
Yeah. City doesn't do anything after you retire to anybody, except the utility. Utility has a policy. I think Jim is requesting that we gave him that. He's been working with me for all these years. I think I personally, but I don't make a decision here on that call.
I think that makes point too. If we're gonna ask him any sort of questions after he retires, I mean.
I think.
Yeah. He could, he could walk away. I don't hear a thing.
Yeah, I, yeah, Jim being valuable and uh, that's just kinda a thing that we do for him. Yes, we don't have the policy in the city side.
And that's where I'm hung up on that.
Yes, yes, and no doubt about your point and he's saying, he's just requesting this and he's not really uh, demanding or anything.
Right, right.
And Jim has been working with me for the last thirty-one years that I've been here, go on thirty-two, he's, has done a lot for the city and uh, we're gonna miss him and, but he's gonna be around and to help out. So it just a request and you guys can discuss it and agree or disagree, but we just have to uh, give him credit for what he has done for the city.
And I and I say that vacation time that he didn't use, that's his dedication. He knows he has to stay with the city, help us out, cause we were shorthanded. Some people might just say, I'm gonna take on vacation. I don't care what happens to the city, but Jim's not that way.
But he just got compensated for that though, too.
Yeah, that, yes.
So definitely on my side, helps clear up a little bit was, didn't realize we did have a pol- something in place for at least part of this. The ongoing, how they could continue coverage. It's just, he's just asking ad hoc for that fifty-fifty coverage the first year, so, okay.
Yes, yeah. Just.
That was one of my big concerns there is that we didn't have something in place at all, and this was setting a big precedent.
On the city side, we do, yes. We have it on the utility side and maybe down the road, we'll try to have a policy or something. But he just having that he's gonna retire, been doing a good job for the city and I uh, I value all what he has done for the city and in all the angles, so it's still up to the council to decide and. Alan gonna be around the sewer, he doesn't like that, but so.
And when Doug retired, you said he worked with Pat for a year or two.
Yeah, but.
And Jim, but Jim's just got three months to work with the guy, and that's why I said, I think it'd be very beneficial to help him out, so possibly he can help the three guys in the future with questions.
I'll go to make a motion on the second party to accept his proposal.
Is there a second? Move in second, okay. How do you vote? Cabo?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yep.
Russell?
Yes.
Patrick?
No.
Thank you for your.
Thanks, Jim. Appreciate it.
Okay, thirteen, rescue unit, department new hires.
Okay, we received some applicants, applications and we have five for uh, director and one for uh, uh, paramedic. So we got good turnout. Now we, it's up to the council, we need to have a committee like what we had with Jim.
With Jim and the place.
Hiring and the bodies and all this stuff. So if you'd like to uh, have a committee to work with me and the mayor on the hiring, that would be highly appreciated.
There you go, Morgan and Russell.
I think, I think, you know, just, this is just my personal feeling here. Uh, you know, we should've had this done two or three weeks ago. Uh, I know the mayor called for a special meeting, uh, and we could've had some sort of plan done at that time. Uh, cause we kinda floundering, nobody really knew where it was going and, you know. Uh, I know there were some, some calls that didn't get covered. I don't blame our guys. We know they're doing the best they can, you know, out there. And I think, you know, we're kinda doing a disservice to the city, um, by putting this out there even longer. You know, uh, I know, uh, we got, uh, one candidate that used to, used to work here and I talked to you, Ash, and he told me he didn't have any issues with him. Um, and I talked to some people in town and they uh, uh, they agreed and uh, you know, supported me through some signatures on a proposal. So I'd like to put a proposal out there tonight, cause I'm gonna, I'm gonna do it out in the open. And I'm not gonna go and have meetings and and do this behind closed doors and make decisions, cause I do have a question when I'm done here, but I'll ask it now. I see that there's a full-time paramedic position posted, is that right?
Yeah.
And we lost our one full-time paramedic when they resigned, right? So when did the council vote to create another full-time?
That's what we're trying to get the council to vote. That's why we're in a special meeting, we didn't have a call-in. That's why we will add and be able to propose that we will have two, director and paramedic in charge.
So we put it out there to get applicants before even agreed, so where are we gonna get the funds today for this?
Yeah. You already have the phone.
From, what do you mean?
You you used to have paramedic and director and assistant director and this.
But we did have, are they getting benefits, the full-time paramedic?
No, they don't get it. We don't have full-time right now to get any.
No, no, no. I mean, so you're gonna have a director, it's gonna be full-time, right? When you have a full-time paramedic?
If the council.
And they do this, but but what what do we do if we don't approve that?
We don't have.
And then what do we tell that applicant?
Cause I'm saying, I'm saying we.
We tell them we're not offering, what what have, you only have one applicant. We tell them we're not gonna offer the the full-time position.
Does anybody kinda see where that seems to be an issue to me? I've never seen them ask them before, post a job that could not materialize.
We used to have full-time assistant director. We don't have anymore. We're trying to boost through the process of rebuilding now, what they want. So trying to advertise and give to the council the offer to have a project to.
I I understand what you're saying. I'm saying it seems like it's done backwards.
Well, we tried to have a special meeting, we didn't have a call-in.
Didn't have call-in, did we?
So what we're gonna do?
So but 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 you had a meeting, right? You and Dustin and Cory and Craig had a meeting. Is that where this full-time position was discussed?
Not really, no.
No. No.
No.
Okay. So I. So I just, that was just your call, list of it, that on the list?
Yes, yes, and it's still my call, and I still think that the direction we to go to rebuild this department.
So.
That's my recommendation.
So you're making rec- so I.
You don't have to agree with it.
But I just, I just don't see the sense in doing it that way.
Well, then the.
I, wouldn't you normally get council approval first?
Point of order.
Well.
Yeah, point of order.
Oh, what?
Are, are we on a agenda, I don't, I mean, this discussion could just need heard. In the middle of a meeting.
What? I know, it's, it's a way to shut discussion down, and I, and I understand that, I understand that, so, so, like I said, I'm trying to correct what I see as an error,
Well, not shutting down.
for the city, okay, and I'm just gonna, I'm gonna make my proposal and I'm gonna leave it up to you guys to decide.
Yeah.
Okay, so I know we got, we, uh, I would, uh, propose that we hire Danny Clausen as the full-time director at eighty thousand dollars a year.
He's got a motion.
That, this is a motion, but wait, I'm not done, that eighty thousand does not include benefits, in lieu of benefits, he would just get the cash. Just take cash instead of, instead of paying twenty thousand for benefits on top of his salary, it would just all be salary. So do we know who the other candidates for directors?
Yes.
Can you, can you tell us?
Yeah.
So Mike, you're asking to put Danny as head without any of the other council, even though applicants?
Cause we, cause we took so long, you know, and this was held up, you even saw the, the benefit of having a special meeting. And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, I'm not picking on you guys, but we had a special meeting for the police, and we, we, we added a, an additional officer without hesitation. Okay, we didn't have funding, so that's, that's why I'm saying this, you know, I think we need to get this going.
But Dave and I interviewed three different candidates too.
But we authorized it prior to that, that's what I'm saying, we authorized it prior, so.
Okay, we have a motion by Cobba to have Danny for eighty thousand dollar a year without benefit, do we have a second? No second to the motion.
I'll see what candidates we have.
Look, yeah, I think we need to go through an interview process, applicants.
I would like to be on that committee.
I think there's too much conflict of interest.
With what? With what?
You're too close to the issue and too close to pushing up against certain things with this.
You, you just brought it.
What do you mean?
You, you ask who pushed the ma- who pushed Ash to open the position up?
Your honor. Your honor.
I asked a question.
It's come from you and utility board.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we just need two council member with the mayor and I to have a committee.
I should have liked me, I like me. I disagree too, but, I'd say Russell and Morgan, and that's just a mutual, I can't be on it, but.
Okay.
Yeah. Would you be willing, Craig?
I'm more than willing.
James?
With my schedule.
You decline?
Then choose somebody else, Ash.
For what's going on, we'll have just Russell and the mayor and myself.
Perfect.
At least interview.
Yes, I'm doing interviews and then it brings the whole team back to the council.
Yep.
Perfect.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, fourteen. Bid debate nuisance properties, I got a bid from Marty Derry, and it isn't an exact bid because he has to look at these properties either from the street or the island. And he really doesn't know until he gets into there, starting to clean up.
So this was just a bid sheet, basically?
Basically, we, Sarah had already asked another contractor, and he said he was too busy to give that, I've used Marty a number of years, and it'd be, Marty, the police, and Harrison going in on these properties, four of them, right now, in what the, what is it, two weeks, we'll have five more properties.
And how come we haven't been getting a list like we used to when Max was?
We changed.
Well, you could get the council list, can't you?
I can't edit spreadsheet, I guess I could take the time to recreate a different spreadsheet.
Yeah. We can, we can.
I mean, when people say they're getting picked on, we've got thirty, forty properties he's working on, and the next, each, next one, I'm gonna talk about code enforcement too. But this way we'll get four properties cleaned up, and then five right away.
Good. Perfect.
Okay. Either motion or say. Oh. Are we, the motion to accept that, that, that bid sheet?
Well, you were.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's just his prices for dealing and stuff, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay, and you, we've used them before.
Oh, yeah.
So, all right, I'm gonna.
Move.
I'll second it.
Second, how do you vote, Capatton?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yep.
Cobba?
Yep.
Okay, the B, the next one is code enforcement, the council had asked Matt to work on this, and he did send up six notices. I went to a seed meeting, and every other sentence that was brought up, Matt, will you check on this, Matt, will you check on this, Matt, will you check on this? He doesn't have time to work on this, I said, we've got a code enforcement, I'll tell Harrison, he can go out to new housing and start checking on the boats and trailers and campers. But Cheryl Marx and Kevin Sargent specifically said, Matt is economic development person, not code enforcement, he's taken away from his job. He has numer- you go back in his office, he has so many pieces of paper on his desk, and like I say, as soon as Harrison gets these four properties cleaned up, the five other major ones cleaned up, then I'll say, go out to new housing and start checking on the boats, the campers, the trailers, and stuff like that.
Well, that's not against code out there, is it?
Yes, it is.
Well, that's the covenants.
Covenants, yeah.
Covenants, yeah.
Well, I don't think.
He can do, he can do that.
He can do, and we're gonna do, okay.
Yeah. Steve, Steve Rick had checked years ago, he can do that.
I don't think it's fair to the rest of the community when there's a covenants out there.
I know, I know, but that's, that's.
And then we're gonna send Harrison out there and.
Still, question on that, I, I, I could be totally off base on my, my memory here, but didn't we talk about kind of softening some of those covenants? I think maybe that was right before I joined the council, or maybe right when I joined the council.
Isn't that here?
Yeah.
I vaguely remember something about redo, eliminating some of those covenants, I don't know if that was even possible, I know we talked about it.
We talked about, yeah, we talked about.
But. Yeah, I, I.
Are you thinking of when we talked about eliminating like fees for fences maybe, and sheds, cause we did talk about that, Jason was kind of like on board with that.
Okay. I, I, I don't remember if that was a, I, I just remember something along those lines, that we're kind of like, eh, it's kind of unfair, you know, the city and the new properties, and we're talking about trying to reduce those, maybe we, determined it wasn't able to be done, so that's, that's all I can remember. I tried searching for it previously, but I couldn't find it.
But the seed people definitely said, no, Matt's got enough on his plate, and I can work with Harrison and see if he can work on some of those.
So I have a question about that, does, is Matt, are you paid by seed, is that where you get your check from? I don't think so, um, if we look at his job description, it does cover, uh, code enforcement, and while it probably shouldn't be a major part of his thing, you know, um, I believe it's, there was somewhere I read where it said, you know, Ash would be in charge of his, uh, basically time management, like you could tell him like, you can spend ten percent of your time on code enforcement, or you get an hour a day or something, you know, to do it, and then that would be up to Matt to maybe not take on so many properties, maybe just look at one, something like that, but I know, I have if, and correct me if I'm wrong, cause I've been wrong before, I think it was a unanimous vote to have him do that, up here, and really it's just, it's not up to an outside company to say, well, he can't do that, because the last I checked, I thought the council did the policy setting, on that, since he's an employee, we, we did that, so, I mean, if you can work with him, Ash, and Matt, I'm sure you're open to working with him and setting up, an amount of time, a, a, a good amount of time, so you can get your, your economic development stuff done, and maybe do a little bit of code enforcement. Like if it's even three hours a week or something, I don't know, I'm just throwing, I'm just spitballing stuff, but I know we passed it, so.
Okay, uh, beggars' night. The five to six thirty P M on Friday in the downtown district, October thirty-first, and residential frick or treat would be from six to eight. Chamber.
Can we just set that from here on out, or why do we have to do this every year?
I always, I always leave it up to chamber, I asked, was asked why I didn't set it earlier, I was asked September twenty-fifth, it's gotta be approved by the council, I can't set it until the council makes it.
Yeah.
And so I need a motion from the council to prove this.
I'm, I'll make that motion.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Second, okay, how do you vote?
Yeah.
I agree with you though.
Right, it's just.
Capatton?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yep.
Cobba?
Yes.
Okay, fifteen, Stuart Economic Development, Matt, All Saints Retention.
Jordan Marx had submitted a letter, he would like to, uh, or have his portion of the stormwater retention basin donated to the city, in a sense.
Of course you could.
So, prior, prior cities, or prior meetings, it was agreed to have the stormwater retention basin separated from lot thirty-three, and a, a hill of that basin is attached to lot thirty-two, and so Jordan Marx would like to jump on that then, if the city could take care of that stormwater basin. For, uh, forest can include that in separating the parcels, but there would be an additional fee of seventy-five dollars or a hundred dollars, that's, that's a guess, but there, uh, legal fee for.
I think that's just fine with these, not in your minds.
Yeah, for separating the parcel.
And we just be responsible for it?
Yeah, for the remainder of the build.
Yeah. Did we ever figure out what we were gonna do with the maintenance of, remember, I know we talked to Jim, and I know he just left, and that's fine.
Wasn't he looking at some sort of vegetation that we could just burn off a couple times a year, do some light maintenance to or something?
Vegetation. Yeah.
I think he was gonna check the drone on that, yeah.
Yeah, 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 that's right, I just didn't know if, like I said, if we could, uh.
With, with, with this, do we have to add on to that sidewalk that?
No, it's already done.
It's already done, okay, so we don't have to add on to that, okay. Okay.
We adding, I don't know, fifty foot to, a fifty foot hill to the current stormwater basin? It was initially a part of the stormwater basin, but, uh, he ended up, uh, the builder ended up building on that lot, not realizing that part of the lot had that attached to it, and the buyer purchased it not realizing. But, yeah, I feel it was with it.
Okay. Uh, do we need a motion on this?
Yeah. We need a motion.
Yes.
We need a motion.
I'm so moved, I'd second that, so, yes.
Okay. Second, okay, how do you vote, Capatton?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cobba?
Yep.
Uh, you need to talk anything else on your, right, all right.
Thanks, sir.
Okay.
Bobby, we have shit here.
Public forum?
That was it, just make a.
But, so now that we have, uh, Chip Schultz, city's financial advisor, now that we have information about the, uh, cops grant, I've talked with Ash a little bit about, getting some scenarios together for the council to take, to take a look at, for funding for the police, for streets, for, I talked to Jim for the meeting, and for the rescue department. It might be a little more of a lengthy discussion, and didn't know if the council wanted to have that as a special meeting next week sometime, if you're able to do so. Um, just to work, start to work through scenarios in terms of what that levy impact would look like for the city with those additional costs and a potential financing. So, up to you, obviously as a council, do you wanna meet perhaps just Tuesday, Wednesday, uh, Wednesday or Thursday of next week, perhaps? Just an idea.
I was gonna say, can we check our schedules and just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sir, Ash.
We'll do the schedule as you.
Fair retail.
Of course, next course, that's all.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, we're public one.
I was just gonna bring up, and shoot, feel free to shoot me down, I'm just throwing this out there, I don't wanna speak for the fire chief, I don't.
Yeah, he's here.
Um.
Is he? Steve, nope.
No, Steve is.
He's at the meeting, I think.
He's not.
Would you guys be opposed to the fire chief and police chief being on that committee for rescue stuff, just to help out, I mean, we'd like to work with.
No, I would not be opposed to that.
I mean, I'd be willing to, I don't wanna speak for Stephen, but.
Well, I can, I, I got a message from Stephen suggesting that too, so thank you for bringing it up, and, uh, I wouldn't be opposed to that.
Okay, yeah. Welcome up, thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
You got something, Josh?
He said exactly.
He said, okay.
I have something if.
Yep, Sean, go ahead.
Perfect. Yeah, you can go first, I'm done.
Either way. Couple hours?
No, he said minutes.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I, I assume the FFA still does parliamentary procedure, and if they do, I would encourage you, maybe after the new council members elect, elected, have them up here and just, spend a little time going over parliamentary procedure with you, I, I know I've scolded you before, the, the thing that obviously upsets me the most is, uh, in courtrooms and the legislature, any deliberative body, uh, you don't want members of your body talking back and forth to each other, because it can get personal, and, and it turns into a back and forth, in which case the person who's supposed to be presiding over the meeting loses control. Really, people shouldn't speak unless they're recognized by the presiding officer, and I know this is a small enough group, it's, it's easy to get loosey-goosey, and whoever feels like it talks, that can quickly get out of control, but, just, and, and when I was getting upset, I knew nothing about the, the substance of, of what you're talking about. It's just the procedure bothers me, because it's very important that you guys work together, and one of the things that can really facilitate that is if you're talking about ideas, you know, talking about personalities, it's one of the things that facilitate that, address, technically under Robert's rules and orders, or whatever your, whatever parliamentary rules are, you're supposed to address your comments to the chair. So, that's, that's, that's my big thing.
Oh, can you get more?
Yeah, I've got just a little bit more.
Okay, that's right, now it's just gonna jump in.
You're really good at that, Mike.
Well, I ask your permission, so, you're fine, go ahead.
Uh, the, the other thing is, if there are any ca- uh, candidates for city council here or watching online, it is illegal to put signs in the parking, unless there are two carve-outs in the state law, if you're a real estate agent or an auctioneer, you can put signs in the parking. Everybody else, it's illegal, and every time I've run for office, I've been schooled, you can get a lot of trouble, don't put your yard sign in the parking. Back when we had horse and buggies, the parking is the area between the sidewalk and the street, and it's both for traffic safety reasons, it's very distracting, uh, could obstruct the view, you know, of somebody chasing a ball into the street or something, um, and also aesthetics, you know, if people are throwing signs in the parking, it gets ugly very quickly. So, and I know as somebody who's run for office, you can't always control your supporters, you can give them a sign and they put them in the wrong spot, but, um, just before it gets out of hand,
Sure.
don't put your campaign signs between the sidewalk and the street, or there is no sidewalk where there's supposed to be a sidewalk in the street, that was my, so, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, I think you make a good case for like having council rules, specific council rules, and maybe having like stuff up here, cause I don't know if we've adopted Robert's rules of order. I've heard it both ways.
That's, that's true, you can, you can adopt your own parliamentary, and the other thing I was gonna. That's, that's true, you can, you can adopt your own parliamentary, and the other thing I was gonna mention is, normally, you're not supposed to have discussion unless there's a motion on the floor, I know you guys kind of, you do the discussion first, and then as soon as there's a motion, you vote, that's not the way it's supposed to work. Once there's a, a motion and a vote, then the presiding officer is supposed to ask if there's any discussion, and you make sure that the discussion's done, it's not, you know, as soon as there's like a bam, you get to vote, you know? Um, then, you know, somebody, you get in the steamroller situation where, well,
You've got a-
I, I've gotta vote against it because I didn't get to discuss the thing that, that's bothering me about it, so.
Yeah.
Those are my, my parliamentary procedure tips.
Thank you, sir.
John?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Hi, Sean.
Alright, to the city administrator, to the city mayor, city council, and to the people of Stewart and beyond that I served as my time, uh, the Stewart EMS director, I wanted to make a statement. My resignation from the city of Stewart was not because of formal discipline due to insubordination. My resignation from the city of Stewart was not because I feared that the city administrator would terminate me, I did not fear that. My resignation from the city of Stewart was not because I thought the city council had justification for taking further action than the city administrator had. I was not then, I'm not now, concerned that my job performance was ever at a point that would warrant further discussion or action by the city council. My resignation from the city of Stewart was not because of any political discourse. My resignation from the city of Stewart was not because of any petition to see me removed, or fear that one might. At no point in time was my resignation due to the concern that I would be terminated if I did not resign. My resignation from the city of Stewart was because of my priority and resolve to protect and preserve the safety and happiness of my family, my marriage, and myself. My resignation from the city of Stewart was because of years of ongoing harassment from many people, but including members of the fire department and city employees. My resignation from the city of Stewart was because of repeated direct attacks on me, which include fabricating lies about me, harassing me, a completely unfounded and unequivocally false frivolous lawsuit alleging complaints against me, and certain individuals constantly requesting my termination due to what I believe are personal vendettas. These attacks were often a result of me holding others accountable and standing up to say that people could not harass patients, needed to show integrity when performing duties for the city, could not obviously violate policy, and could not steal from the city. My resignation from the city of Stewart was because these attacks and this harassment went further and was directed at my family. Attacking my family was a cross line that I am totally unwilling to forget, forgive, or excuse. My resignation from the city of Stewart was because the harassment issues and complaints were known to the city administrator and the city council. Despite their knowledge of these events, they chose not to reprimand, punish, or even discourage the employees, members, or subjects in question. My resignation from the city of Stewart was because despite these attacks being directed at me, I was the only one to receive any form of reprimand, even when I was not even a part of the incident, and it was clearly documented that others had broken policy and laws. In June of twenty twenty-four, I resigned and was talked out of that resignation. I was promised change by the very people that are still sitting up here. Despite that, literally nothing has changed. I've continued to be harassed by the same people in similar manners. Additional problems have been reported and ignored. I continue to be the one expected to have integrity and grace, while others continue to be rewarded for having none. The city administrator refuses to take any action despite clear violations of policies and laws. Then the city council refuses to take any action on these violations and dismisses them. The city mayor stands idly by and does little, the, they further refuse to consider these things when making decisions for the city. At the very heart of the decision, of my decision to resign, is that the city of Stewart, that its administration and city council and I have very different morals and values. I expected myself and the rescue department members to act with integrity, honesty, and to always strive to be better, learn more, and to above all, focus on providing the patient with the best experience we can provide them. I continually focused on the idea that I was gatekeeper for my employees, meant to protect them and speak on their behalf, that any complaint or directed comment made by them, about them, or to them, was given an honest look, investigated, and action was taken when that was appropriate. The city of Stewart shares none, does not seem to share any of these values, and routinely works against them. The city and the council seem to lack integrity, promote and encourage dishonesty, and they find felicity in avoidance and abandonment of difficult expectations and conversations. These next two reflections, which are not my words, are directed at a Catholic audience, however, I, they weighed heavily when I was making this final decision, and I think that they're good for any and all people to hear and listen to when they decide where they wanna cast their lots. The cross compels us towards justice, compassion, and solidarity with all those who suffer. It challenges us to open our eyes to the plight of the poor, the hungry, the sick, and the oppressed, and to vehemently challenge the structures responsible for their suffering, while we do what we can to alleviate their distress. It warns us not to rest until there is justice for all, to resist the constant temptation to participate in corruption or selfishness, but to transform the vicious circle of life into a circle of grace and mercy. And then the next one, the person who is trustworthy in very small matters is also trustworthy in great ones. And the person who is dishonest in very small manners is also dishonest in great ones. If you are not trustworthy with what belongs to another, who will give you what is yours? No servant can serve two masters, he will either hate one and love the other, or be devoted to one and despise the other. The residents of Stewart deserve better, they should expect a better, and I believe that they do. I attempted to be a vector of change in the city, a catalyst and an example of integrity and honesty, with a servant leader focus. I was not able to achieve much change, and I hope that eventually positive change can be made. But as it stands, there was no part of the city that seemed willing to do that. So, thank you guys.
Thank you, Sean.
Anybody else on public forum?
Okay, we're gonna go to closed session, and we need a motion.
Do you wanna read that?
To read that?
Yes, he will need it, we just need a motion to go to cloke, closed session, moved by Kalba.
I'll second it.
Exactly, but who?
How do you vote, Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yep.
Kalba? I need to-
Yes.
Closed session to discuss litigation with council, closed session under Iowa Code Section twenty-one five. See discussed strategy with council matter of present owner and litigation where disclosed would be likely prejudiced or disadvantage the position of the government body in that litigation.